Close enough to six o'clock. This is Town of Hennessy's Board of Trustees Regular Call to order, roll call.
All right, Dave?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Report from Town of Hennessy, A D, H O C Agency, Barbara. Hennessy United Meeting, they had elected two new people. I think there's actually more than that once they all come out. Planned on the wine festival, ordering the glasses and stuff like that, and they asked us to make sure we had extra dumpsters. I think you took care of that, Tiffany?
Yes.
Anything you want to add to that, Laura? Consider approval of consent agenda. Approval in previous month meeting. Approval of claims as follows: General Fund, thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and forty-four cents. R S T F, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Library Fund, three hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents. The Street and Alley Fund, a hundred and fourteen dollars and two cents. Previous month purchase orders, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Except Department reports, Flower Department, September twenty twenty-four, Library Report, August Treasurer Report, Office Managers Report. Approve Police Chief's job description. August Park Demetary Report, and then approve Police Chief's job description.
Mr. Mayor, can you pull down the job description?
Yeah. Pull down the, approve the Police Chief job description down, so.
Is that okay if I ask?
He said yes.
Okay. Sorry, I should have asked you first.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Citizens comments? Got two of us, three. Town Administrator Report?
You guys have my report. The only other thing that I have, well, there's two things. Bert, the Purple Heart City Resolution, we never got anything on that.
I'm sorry?
The Purple Heart Resolution.
Oh, she didn't get, okay.
Just so you're aware, just following up.
Trying to follow it.
And then, under the Computer Supply, Town Board Computer Supply, I was gonna have you guys approve that, but when we took out, for right now, we'll just go with War, it's under mine, so I went ahead and got those.
Thank you.
Other than scheduled business, discuss, approve, deny, reject, or take action on the following. Except twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, F Y Audit Final Report. Audit twenty-three Final Report.
Mayor, I got a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
On that agenda item, is our only option to accept it as written, or can we ask questions about it for clarification before we vote?
I think where it's on the agenda for scheduled business, you all can discuss as needed.
I'm sorry?
I think since it's on the agenda for, for discussion and action, you're, you're free to discuss and ask questions. Hopefully, somebody can answer those.
Thank you, thank you, Jared.
Small lady.
Yeah, I've got, I've got several questions. If you guys will bear with me, I'll try to rip through them so we don't spend all night here on them. Tiffany, can you give me a ballpark dollar figure on the cost of this audit, please?
It's right around...
I don't expect the exact number.
I think it's around sixty-one hundred dollars.
Sixty-one hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I believe. I cannot, that's just...
All right. That's within plus or minus a thousand, is that right?
But, some of these questions, I think if you would have asked me beforehand, I could have got all the information for you.
Okay, but I, to be honest with you, I prefer to ask these questions in front of that camera right there, in front of the...
Okay.
That's my position, okay? And I'm not trying to be rude to you. I'm just telling you, I'm, I'm telling you why I'm doing what I'm doing. Okay, and Shelley, I know, I understand you're the Treasurer and you're the Office Manager, so please feel free to pitch in on answering these questions if Tiffany stumbles on any of it. I'd like to know, what did Crawford provide to the, to the auditors?
So Crawford comes in and does a annual financial statement.
Annual financial statement?
Yes, and that's pretty much majority of the report. And then, the auditor comes in and audits those financial reports along with all of our documentation in the office.
Okay, you're getting ahead of me, I'm sorry. So what I heard you say is they audit all the financial statements, is that right?
Correct.
Provided by Crawford?
Correct.
Okay. You and Shelley don't provide those financial statements, Crawford does.
No, Crawford does all of that.
Okay, all right. Then you just said, so you were Shelley, I'm sorry?
Crawford comes in for about two to three days at the beginning, like, they've already come in this year to get our annual financial statement for fiscal year ending twenty-four.
Okay.
Crawford comes in for two to three days, and then they do pretty much the whole entire financial statement along with all their documentation, and then they send it over to the auditor.
Okay, so you and Shelley don't have to do any of that at all?
Not the reporting, no, not at all. We, we gather information that they ask for.
Yeah, so in other words Crawford hits you for information every now and then and stuff that they may be missing or confused on or don't add, or...
Correct. But they spend like two or three days onsite initially.
So again, my question is, my next question is, so Crawford provided annual financial statements. What did you provide, Tiffany?
Any documentation they asked for. I don't know...
Okay. Shelley, what did you provide to the auditors?
If they ask for something, we go and find it. I don't know, I don't understand your question.
Okay, my question is simple. It's what did Shelley provide to the auditors, Arledge? Did you provide any information to Arledge during the audit?
I'm sure they come in and ask for stuff. Yeah, because they may ask for copies of invoices, or they may ask for bank statements, they may ask for stuff like that, and so we have to provide them stuff.
Let me, let me back up, let me back you up a little bit. So you guys didn't provide any overarching stuff. All you provided was detailed information on examples would be purchase orders and stuff like that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, she came to me and she said, "Do you have July twenty twenty-three state statements?" I would don't get them.
Okay, so we're talking lower level documents.
Whatever they ask for, we would don't get.
All right. Did anybody else other than you two provide anything? I'm sorry if I'm being funny here.
You're being very funny. No, uh...
If all you want to.
No, because...
I want to get through these questions, though.
Okay. Sometimes our A P clerk, like, if there's copies of invoices, they go get those.
So you can actually delegate that, and you let them talk directly to the auditors, is that right?
Yeah, anybody and everybody. I think they even talked to Cliff. They even brought, usually they bring in a board member, and I think usually it's the mayor, and they brought Cliff in.
Very good. So this is a general question. Actually, Jared, this might be for you, sir.
I'll try my best.
I noticed on this report here, I don't like this report, by the way, so you guys all know. That's why I'm kind of nitpicking my way through it. Arledge don't even have their contact information on this report. The page numbers aren't even on here. That's unbelievable.
Um, so...
That wasn't a question, but please feel free to address it.
It's how they put it together. So like, this comes from them all, like, between Crawford's and Arledge. And so you have your table of contents at the beginning, and it tells you the page numbers. The only thing that does not have the page numbers is Arledge's report, because they send that over to Crawford, so it cannot have established page numbers. But the rest follows the page number order.
Okay. So I'm only partially right on that. Let me, let me ask you this, Jared. Have you seen this report, sir?
I haven't looked at it in great detail.
Okay. I'm gonna give you an example here. I'm looking at a, this is a quasi-signed page. This looks like a company logo in the signature block, and is that legal? Can they, can they submit this report to the State Auditor's Office with a, with a electronic company logo on it as a signature?
I think they're probably gonna be able to get away with it, because your signature's whatever you deem it to be.
True.
I mean, you, you can sign your name with an X, and if that's what you intend to be your signature, that's good enough.
That's what I'm gonna start doing on purchase orders. Now, I'm, I'm, I really can't tell you what page I'm on, because again, it's not numbered. The top of the page says Independent Auditor's Report, and it starts out with an opinion. I think it's the first page of the audit. I want to talk about responsibilities of management for the financial statements. We've already touched on this.
It's gonna be towards the end of the report, isn't it?
It's their, their initial page.
Again, it says, "To the Honorable Mayor and City Council of the Town of Hennessy. Opinion is the first category basis for opinion. Emphasis of matter, basis of accounting." With me?
Everybody has a copy, so this is gonna be very difficult. Yes, okay.
This is their initial cover letter?
Hey, go ahead, sorry.
You got it?
I do, yes.
Okay, all right. So I'm down in the responsibilities of management for the financial statements. We've already touched on this, but I want to clarify this a little more. First sentence says, "Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of financial statements." So we've already talked about Crawford supplied them to the auditors, Arledge, is that correct?
Correct. We contract, every year we approve a contract to be our accounting firm, and they're the ones, so they're actually representing the Town of Hennessy.
Yeah, Crawford, you're talking about Crawford is?
Correct.
Okay, I understand that, yes, thank you, ma'am. So, but do we get, do, do you, I know, I don't think we did, the board, but do you get a look at those financial statements before Crawford sends them to the, to Arledge for audit, or do they just send them?
Um, I look over the draft, yes.
You look over the draft, okay?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Very good.
And they're not finalized until after the auditor campens down.
I noticed this report is dated the eighth of August. Did they send this in to the State Auditors already, or do they wait for us to accept the report before they send it in?
They send it in.
They send it in right off the press with the ink still wet, is that right?
Correct, mm-hmm.
Okay. Down on the bottom of this page, it says Auditor's Responsibilities for the Audit of the Financial Statements. And my point here is, the first sentence talks about they only want to obtain reasonable assurance about the financial statements, and they talk about misstatement, or whether fraud, or error, so they can issue that in their report. So what that tells me is, they're telling us in this report that they're only responsible for those financial statements from Crawford. Is that correct? Is that the way you interpreted it?
I would have to ask Arledge, because I can't, I don't want to interpret what, because everybody reads this and writes something different, so.
Okay. So anyway, let me make another statement here, this is not a question. And I'm gonna move into some more of this, but it looks to me like what they...
Go ahead.
Okay. It looks to me like what they've, I'm sorry for being so entertaining. It looks to me like what we've got here is an audit on our financial statements, and whatever else you guys say, they went over here in, in, in the Town Hall itself. But I'm gonna be honest with you, I went through this report, and I didn't see a lot of stuff documented in this report that could be inside Town Hall. Can you, can you clarify that with a statement, or can you hand me in the right direction in the report?
Um, what about, let me just...
Go ahead.
What if we bring the auditor and the accountant here next month and have them present this to you guys, since you have so many questions, because they would be able to answer all of this?
Okay, so you can't.
Uh, because you're asking me stuff of how they derive from these numbers and different things, and I can only tell you that we open our doors, we open our vaults, a lot of times the accountant and the auditors will show where stuff is, they go in there, they grab stuff themselves sometimes. I mean, so they're gonna be able to explain the whole process to you. I cannot. I only provide them with the stuff that, because Crawford has access to our complete computer program. So they pull a lot of data from our computer program without even us knowing what they...
Do they do that onsite here, or do they do that in their office?
They do that in the office.
Does Arledge have access to our computers also?
Uh, no.
So if they need any data, Crawford either gives it to them, or they ask it from you guys?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I want to talk about the, I'm not, I'm, I'm still gonna, I want to continue, I'm gonna delete, based on you saying you're gonna have them here next month, I want to delete a lot of my questions. But I have got some more for you and/or Shelley. Shelley can pitch in on some of this stuff if she wants. To be honest with you, on the next, the very next page, one of the reasons that I said what I'm saying about it looks to me like they only audited financial statements and very little of any else, is on the very next page, it says, "In performing an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards," then they list one, two, three, four, five bullets, and all five of these bullets, basically, to me, say little to nothing. Again, the first bullet doesn't even say anything at all about what they're looking at. The second one says they're looking at financial statements. Then the third one doesn't say anything, it's just a bunch of hot air. The fourth one, they're talking about evaluating the appropriateness of accounting policies. And wouldn't that be more of a Crawford thing than us, accounting policies? You guys outsource all of our accounting to Crawford, right?
Like, we do some internal stuff, but they oversee, they do our quarterly financial reports, they keep us, make sure that we stay in compliance with everything.
Okay.
But these are more questions that you would have to ask the auditor and our council.
Okay. So, but the last bullet, it says something about, they say something about, they're looking to be able to make a decision whether we can operate or not. The way they worded that kind of, kind of made me wonder, but maybe that's part of their evaluation, state law requirements, I don't know.
I believe like this, and if I'm not mistaken, like, this right here is probably standard for all of their municipal audits.
Yeah, okay, what you're talking about there is the American Standard of Accounting Principles. I've got that. Okay. So again, I'm back to, I was looking at what the scope of what they did was, and again, I'm struggling to find that. I thought that was gonna be the description of their scope. The scope I've seen so far is our financial statements and some capital outlays, and I'm gonna get there, that's the part I want to get to. And they repeated this financial statement stuff over and over and over and over in this report, telling me, or telling us, telling the board and you what they were looking at. So, on the next page, let me back up a little bit. In the front, first page, they said they weren't gonna evaluate, they weren't gonna be evaluating our internal controls. And then I'll be darned if they didn't write us up for an internal control. The one finding they have is on an internal control problem, and I'll get there. So I don't have any questions on that, I just wanted to make that comment. Now I'm on, I'm on page forty out of the audit report. It's numbered. So while they numbered this page, I don't know the others.
Because this is, the numbered pages are actually our annual financial statement done by Crawford.
Okay, got it. I'm on page forty, where it says, identity bottom, where it says budgetary noncompliance. You guys see that? Okay. It says, "The following departments had excess expenditures over available appropriations." And this really surprised me, Restricted Sales Tax Fund on Tourism. They're saying, I think this report is telling me that we spent nine thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars more than we should have out of the tourism fund.
And it's showing that that prior to June thirtieth, that we spent nine thousand over what was budgeted in that.
Okay. I think we said the same thing, you just said it differently than I did.
Well, because some people may not understand appropriations, they may be thinking of how much we may be spending more than what we got.
Yeah.
We still have that money in tourism, it just wasn't budgeted.
Okay. So my, my question is, is how did this happen?
How did that happen?
Yeah, how did we spend more money than we had appropriated?
Um, I believe, I would have to look into that and tell you exactly.
Okay.
Because I think, yeah, I would have to...
Can I interject something? Would there not be budget amendments for those?
Yes, there would be budget.
That's what I was thinking. I just don't remember doing a budget amendment for Restricted Sales Tax on Tourism.
We did like seven or eight budget amendments from the twenty to twenty-one year.
Okay. My next question is, and it's on this particular fund, Restricted Sales Tax Fund Tourism. Do we have a, a written standard operating procedure or a work instruction on how to, how to, how to work that fund? Do we have any written guidance for our employees?
Okay, so that right there is our hotel tax, and it's done by ordinance.
It's done by what?
Ordinance, on what we can and can't use.
Okay. So that money comes in, and who takes care of it? Shelley?
I mean...
It goes in the tourism fund?
It goes in Restricted Fund, but allocated to...
Restricted Sales Tax?
Correct.
With, with a subcategory of Tourism?
Correct.
I got it, okay. So, do we have any type of internal control, internal control on, on that fund to where we should have caught that before that money was spent over budget?
Um, in fact, I'm working on a policy that is going to tighten those internal controls after the whole other one, and we've been having problems making sure, like, in the signature processes, like, we're getting delays and different things, and so I'm working on a new policy. In fact, I sent it over to Jared to like that, and once he says, "Okay", then I'm going to, with the help of Tammy from Crawford, they're gonna provide it to you guys to live over.
Okay, so you're in work, what I heard you say is you're in work on, on a written procedure?
Correct.
Or operating procedure or work instruction with Jared?
Yes.
Okay. My next question on this is, on this particular fund, is how long has it been since this fund has been reconciled? Would you need to look at your records on that?
Yeah, but we at least do it every quarter. We know how much is in the tourism. When Crawford's does their quarterly financial, we know how much is in that. So, but the actual fund, the accounts that the money's in, we reconcile monthly.
Monthly?
Yes.
That's the word I wanted to hear. And you document that?
Well, we do bank recs.
Say that again?
We do bank reconciliations and...
Okay, so you do document?
Yeah. I mean, well, I mean, I don't know what kind of documentation you're looking for.
I'm looking for any documentation that you do on yourself for reconciling the account of Restricted Sales Tax Fund slash Tourism. If I did a records request next week on what we're talking about here, the documented reconciliation on the, on this fund, would you be able to provide me a copy of that document?
That would be our, that would be our quarterly financial statements where it's actually documented.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'm probably gonna do that records request before the, you have Arledge here for the next meeting. All right, now I'm on, I'm on another unnumbered page. It's the page with the Summary Schedule of Audit Findings and Response. Section One, Findings Required to be Reported in accordance with Government Auditing Standards. Item A, Internal Control, Finding Twenty Twenty-three dash zero zero one, Inadequate Record Retention.
Correct.
Okay. Bottom line, it looks like that, that we had a problem on one of our very large capital outlays, is that correct?
Correct. It was a, it came to a board meeting for that expenditure, it was in December of twenty-two, came to the board with Howdy Truck Stop going in, they were going to pay for part of a, a new street, and they wanted the Town Board to kick in ninety-nine thousand, because then we wouldn't have to go out to bed, and so the board voted on it to approve that. For some reason, we've looked, when the auditors came in, in January this year, February, we looked all over and could not, I mean, we looked through every single file and could not find that.
Okay.
But it was documented on board minutes.
Okay. So, you know, I don't know how the other board members feel on that. It is a very large outlay, a very, basically, it's a, it's a very large check, and you guys just didn't have the supporting documents on it.
Correct.
Let me ask you this, and this is important to me. It may not be important to these guys. So they were, so Arledge was here doing these, doing, doing records reviews on capital outlays, is that correct?
Correct.
In Town Hall?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. So, do you have any idea what the population size was on how many they looked at?
Hundreds.
Okay, hundreds, I mean, so here's my...
I can't tell you exactly how many.
Okay, well, I'll ask this question to them again next month. Let me tell you, here's what I'm thinking. If the population size of what they looked at was five, six, or seven, and they found one big mistake, that's a big deal.
Yes.
If the population size is five hundred capital outlays and they found one mistake, it's not really that big a deal, even though it is a ninety-nine thousand dollar deal, okay? So that's my mentality. I'm not trying to beat you up out of finding.
Oh, I know.
So you don't know what the population size was, and you don't know what the sample size was.
I don't know how they come up with their stuff.
But in your mind, though, from watching what they were doing, it's probably a lot, though, is that right?
Yes, we, we pulled a bunch of records.
David, not to interrupt, can I ask a question before we move on to something? What was the mistake on the capital outlay?
You mean that...
I didn't understand. David, what, what did you say that...
So...
Oh, I'm sorry, the finding, did, did you want to hear from me or her?
Either way.
Go ahead, Tiffany.
So they found, when they come in, they pull records, they want a copy of the purchase order, they want a copy of the claim voucher signed by the board.
Right.
Well, and we attach it all together.
Which piece are we missing?
That whole thing for Howdy Truck Stop.
Okay.
Like, the claim voucher...
So we've got the board minutes where the board approved it.
Correct. But that's, but you still have to have all of that.
Right, the P O, and that's, okay, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, David.
It's okay, I'm just trying to...
Went clear on exactly which portion of that was missing.
I understand, and I'm just trying to move through this stuff quickly, so I can get on to next month, now that she's gonna bring these guys in here. So Tiffany, I want to talk about, thank you for explaining it. So far, you're doing a good job on that. So let's talk about, I'm going back up to the top of the page again. I am shocked that the, the auditors actually took that. See, the cause and effect paragraph, cause and effect, this finding is caused by inadequate purchasing procedures. Again, I'm kind of batting for you guys on this one. Again, I'm kind of batting for you guys on this one because depends on how many of those they checked. We only had one problem.
But even one problem, they have to note it because we were in violation of the audit standards.
Got it.
So they have to note it.
Got it.
Um, but then they have, and, and we have found out, like, inadequate policies. That's why we're trying to do a better policy and have, make sure our checks and balances are in there, different things. So, I mean.
Yeah. I, I understand what you're saying. Now, now I'm going to move into an area where I don't agree with you, okay? Somehow, Arledge got taken to, uh, or, or got, attained the opinion that we had insufficient staff to develop internal controls for accurate and complete records. Where did Arledge come up with the idea that we didn't have enough staff to do the, to do this?
You would have to ask them. I don't know.
Ask them?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I will ask them that. Now, on that same note, I'm going to come down to where, do you see management response down about the middle of the page, a little bit lower than the middle of the page?
Yes.
Did you write that?
Did I?
Yeah.
Um, I did it in help with the, um, the account.
So you, okay, so you, let me, let me tell you what I just heard you say. You and Crawford wrote that.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, I want to professionally disagree with it, okay? Uh, and, and let me tell you why. Uh. Let me back up. Let me hear from you on this first. Is it your opinion that we were actually undermanned for six months out of that fiscal year?
Yes, with the, um, the changing of our, um, our staff and, and everything, yes, we were.
I'm sorry?
Yes, we were.
Okay.
Because we're talking June twenty twenty-two
Right.
to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Well, we're talking one July twenty twenty-two to thirty June twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
I, but I'm just restating what you just said. Uh. I just don't, I don't see. I just don't see it. I don't, I don't think that, and, and let me, let me even go a little bit farther, and then we'll come back to this. I don't see that we were undermanned. And then in your, in your, in the second half of your response on there, or yours and Crawford's response, you talked about using imaging software for a corrective action.
Correct.
So that don't fit with being understaffed. Do you see what I'm saying?
We are now using imaging because we have enough staff.
Okay. Let me ask you this. Imaging software, is that something like I talked about several months back on digitizing our records and? So tell me, explain to me what imaging software is and how it's going to fix this finding.
So now, when we put in an invoice and, and everything, we, each invoice has a scan doc, all the scanned documents with it.
Okay.
So now, even Arledge can pull up all of those documents too. Or we go in, a lot of times, I don't even have to go to the file cabinet now. I can just click on that invoice on my computer or that, um, check and find the information, like your purchase order and all of that.
Yeah, don't, don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to beat you up on this topic. I'm hearing what I like. I, I'm a firm believer that we need to digitize everything. And I'm looking forward to the day that you guys are able to do that. And don't forget my idea that I submitted to you a while back about hiring interns to work that for you.
Yes, we're working on with the school right now, working on getting a couple of interns.
I think that would be great. Also, uh, I would like to, I would like to see what we're talking about. Have you already started doing this?
Yes.
Okay, so I could come up here next week sometime and do a records request to see some of this stuff and get actually show it to me on the big screen here?
I don't know that I can, I might build, uh, not yet, because I don't have my laptop. I'm getting a new, my other one crashed, so I've got another one coming in. And my computer, actually, my computer's got ready to die in my office, so I'm just going to go with a laptop that I can dock to my computer or to my monitors. But once I get that, then I'll be able to hook it up here and be able to pull it up there. Otherwise, you can set it at our desk and we can sort it out.
Well, yeah, I probably shouldn't do that. I, I'd rather, I would prefer to do it in here on the big screen so we would all be comfortable without being jammed up behind somebody's computer. Uh, I lost my train of thought. Uh, I, I would like to see that stuff.
Oh, gosh, you can come in anytime.
And I will do a records request if that's what you need.
Um, if you're coming in to view something, you do not.
Okay. I'm trying to skim through my questions here. Bear with me. Let me get back to, I want to get, I want to go back to disagreeing with you about being understaffed. I, I want to explain to you why, and I'm not trying to do this. I'm not trying to do this in a confrontational manner at all, okay? I just want to, I want to, I want to tell you, I want to tell you what I saw during that timeframe. And, and you might even agree with me at least partially. Uh, because we had, we had a lot of people come through here. Now, I'm not dumb. I, I'm not as dumb as a lot of people think I am. I realize that when you hire somebody new to come in a place like this, that there is a learning curve for them. Okay? Uh, but I also know that we got some very good people working in here. And I also know that, uh, that you guys have a lot of capability of getting people up and running very quickly. I've seen that happen. So, let's talk about, uh, so from one July, uh, one July twenty twenty-two, August, September, October, November, December, January, that's not the six months that we're talking about, is it? We're talking about February, March, April, May, June, and July.
I would have to look. I could not tell you exactly.
I'm talking about the, the six months that you consider us being understaffed. Your resignation was in February of twenty-three. So you were here with us the first six months of that fiscal year. So my question is, do you consider us understaffed in those six months that you were here in that fiscal year?
Um.
And if so, why?
We had, we were, only had three of us in Town Hall at that time.
The entire six months?
Um, the last six months?
No.
Are the, the, the six months I was here?
The first six months of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, you were here.
Yes.
You resigned in February of twenty-three. February, March, April, May, June, and July.
Uh-huh.
So that actually puts you out the last five months, not the last six months. And then we had David Trainer replace you, and then we had Starlo replace him. We had, uh, we had a guy named Brad. Brad worked in here from the police department.
Correct.
Uh, Katie was our deputy town clerk. She was working.
She would come in and work in the evenings.
Yeah, she'd come in and work. Uh, Kelly was our new town clerk. We had Denise. We had Hannah.
Uh, no, you didn't have Hannah.
During that timeframe?
Yeah.
Uh, we had Georgie. Is that correct?
Uh-huh. She started after, um, in that last.
Yeah, and we had Shetty as our office manager and treasurer. And we actually had Keith. I didn't know this, but I found a letter that showed Keith Meek as our deputy treasurer.
He's there in case we need him.
Right.
Like, she's out at commissioning. He needs signatures.
You guys never called him in for any help, I don't think, during that time period? I didn't see Keith up here.
Yeah.
Okay. And Melissa was hired during that time period.
No, she wasn't.
She wasn't?
No. She was already doing one.
I'm just going over this quick rundown on the people that, that I thought was in here. If I'm wrong on one or two of them, I guess I'm wrong, but.
But they all were not working, a lot of times, they were not all working at the same time. That was a list of all the employees during that five months, but they were not all on the payroll at the same time.
Do you know how many?
I can get a complete listing of who worked what month if you would like, like.
Oh, that's not necessary. I, I'm, I'm just talking in generalities here. I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you that I disagree that we were undermanned. Uh.
And undermanned to me, too, is changeover, because it takes a good two to three months to even get somebody trained. And Georgie, I mean, Georgie can testify of how, especially doing AP work and payroll.
Okay. Thank you, uh, for only laughing at me a little bit. That's okay. I don't mind being laughed at. I laugh at myself a lot. Uh, I do have one more thing I want to talk about on this topic. Uh, I got on the, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being patient with me. I'll make it quick. I got on the, I'm, I'm talking about internal controls. I'm talking about internal controls. Uh. I got, uh, I got on the state auditor inspector's website, and I pulled down this document here. Uh, anybody can gain access to it. There's no passwords required. Barb, you copied that? The title of the document is Top Ten Things to Strengthen Internal Controls in the Office. And I'm not going to go over all ten of them. I only, I only, I only want to highlight a couple of them, okay? Uh. SAI dot OK dot org, if anybody wants to look this up. Uh, number five is, uh, develop written procedures. So you've already talked about you're doing that. I strongly recommend that you work that to completion as soon as possible. Uh.
Can I ask a question real quickly? Jared, are we beyond our agenda item of talking about the audit report?
I mean, it's tangentially related.
I'm talking about the corrective action that I disagree with.
Okay.
The management response that I disagree with. Uh, perform reconciliations regularly. You've already told me that, uh, we do those quarterly, some monthly.
The documented is quarterly.
Documented is quarterly.
Correct.
Okay, I'll probably pull some of those records. And the last one I, I wanted to mention is, uh, perform a self-evaluation of your internal control system. Do you guys ever do that?
Um, I.
And document it?
Since I've been back, I'm really working on all of this.
Okay, but if I asked you to, show me some that are on file, and you don't have any on file as past tense?
Um, like, we have purchasing procedures in our co-book, but we're trying to actually write policy. We're trying to get more policy written than just what is obtained in the co-book.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for being patient with me, Bert.
Yeah, I was just.
Appreciate you asking a question.
All right. Jared, since, uh, we're going to have the auditors come in and speak to us next month, can we table six one, six two, and six three?
We're not on the timeline to get that accepted. Where are we?
And it's done, so we don't really have to accept it. That's just something to prove that we gave it to you guys.
The, the only concern I would see is with six point two, just because those auditors tend to fill up rather quickly. There's only so, so many to do it, but I know if you've got questions, you may be hesitant to go ahead and retain them for the next year. But I think you certainly could table each of those if you chose to do so.
I'm a bit confused between six point two and six point three. Uh, improve the engagement letter with Arledge and Associates to conduct the twenty-three, twenty-four audit. That would be the fiscal year that just ended, June thirtieth, correct? And then we're going to, in a, another agenda item, discuss with possible action to direct the town administrator to prepare a request for proposal for the audit that, for the fiscal year that actually began July first of this year, correct?
That is correct, because I know that they.
So we haven't engaged our auditing firm?
Usually the auditing firm sends us that engagement letter back in May, and I just got it this past month, and so, um, that's why we have it here. But really, um, to go out for RFP, that's going to put our audits behind for grants. We won't be able to obtain any grants without a current audit. Um, we'll lose some of our, uh, like, GAS use tax, you know, because it won't be performed.
So, so this agenda item would be to audit past business, basically? Everything that was up until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
Six point two would be for that.
Correct, okay.
So we just want to, uh, we're going to table six one. It really don't matter. We can bring that back up next month. Six two, approve engagement letter with Arledge and Associates to conduct the twenty-three, twenty-four FY audit.
I think, before you get to that one, I think you do need to, unless you all have a different practice, you need to have a motion, second vote to table the items so we'll be able to bring it back. I mean, I guess, as far as you believe, we could just leave it be, and since there was no action taken, we can just put it back on the agenda. So I guess he can't do it either way, but since you have mentioned the word table, that, that is an action that you would have to take. But like I say, now, taking through it, I don't think it would be improper to just put it back on the next agenda without that motion. And so, sorry to interrupt for something that's irrelevant now.
Improve the engagement letter with Arledge and Associates to conduct the twenty-three, twenty-eight, twenty-four FY audit.
So we are on a timeline for that, correct?
Correct.
And when is that deadline?
Well, Crawford, I mean, Crawford's has already has our draft, um, financial statement done. Um, so I'm not sure how long it would take to create an RFP to go out for a new auditor and get bids and, and then us get on their schedule.
So we got a possibility of losing some.
Losing grants, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't mean to talk over you.
No, you're fine. That's, that was my next question, so. We could put grants in jeopardy if we don't approve, okay.
I make a motion to approve the engagement letter with Arledge and Associates to conduct the twenty-three, twenty-four FY audit.
One second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discuss the possible action to direct town administrator to prepare the RFP for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five audit.
So you would prepare this in looking for other firms to come in and
Correct.
submit a proposal of what their costs would be and?
Yes.
If my pen doesn't write it, I'd make it.
I'm making motion to direct town administrator to prepare our F P for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five audit.
Second.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Discuss the possible action concerning the parking situation, problem on Main Street and Oklahoma Avenue. Bert?
We tabled this last month, and, uh, I, uh, I think there was some miscommunication on what I was wanting to attempt to do. When I was talking about the parking on Oklahoma Avenue from the stoplight east, I wasn't talking about parallel parking up to the alley, but from the alley right here on East to Cherokee Street. Um, if you go northbound down this alley behind Town Hall, it's very difficult to see if you're going left or right, because even if you're, uh, if you're turning left, you've got oncoming traffic that you can't see. That's always been parallel parking. I don't know what has happened, but, uh, other than the painting, the signs, uh, not the signs, I'm sorry, but the markings on the street are pretty well worn off. But that has somehow turned into angle parking. Uh, I talked with Sheila Dwell, uh, after our last discussion, and, uh, she would like to see us do a couple of parallel spaces in front of the Hive Building as handicap spaces. Uh, a lot of their clientele need that handicap parking. So my, my, uh, So my, my, uh, my suggestion would be to designate the two parking spots in front of the Hive just to the east of the alley as handicap spaces, and then make the rest of that block parallel parking, so that people can see coming out of this alley better.
I thought Aaron was going to be here on this one. What about the, I thought Aaron was going to be here on this one.
Okay.
Uh, what about making that alley a one-way street? My thing is you've got Honeco there, business, you know? You know, you make this a one-way street?
Going this way?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Harold, the only issue I have with that is the alley right here is one-way going north. If we make this one one-way going south, I think there's going to be a lot of confusion. I'm not saying that we don't have collisions, but just a lot of confusion of which way you could go and which alley. And I think-
I do as your bank, one-way that way. It'd be, uh, one-way this way.
It's just very difficult to see around the cars, but, uh, I, uh, I don't, like I said, I don't know how it got changed that we had parallel parking east of the alley and now we don't, other than people are just doing it.
Yeah.
As of the way it looks to me.
When I talked to Shelley, her biggest concern was where was an employee going to park at? Her customers park at, not only at Perry Quilt, but also at, you know, uh, Honeco. So, you know, if you limit the spaces, you know, you go to parallel parking, you're going, uh, like you're going to limit the spaces to park, you know, for people. You know, the bank's actually nice to let them use their parking lot and stuff.
Right, yeah.
Especially when the big, their big stuff is going on. Tiffany, the other day when I met with you, uh, did you tell me something, Aaron was going to look at that?
No, I said Aaron proposed that we do it to one-way.
Going south?
Because going out, even if you make these parallel, these cars this way, you can't see anything.
Yeah, I know. And I hate to make that parallel, because we do need the parking. That's a given.
What if we took out that last parking spot right there? Would that help? See, and you'll think like, oh, that's-
I think it would help, and I think it would help possibly, and personally, I'd like to see us try this before we make the alley one-way. I know a lot of people that go to the Baptist church, park and exit going north down that alley on Sundays. But what I'd like to see is try is do a parallel space or two in front of the Hive, parallel. And then if we want angle parking from there east, I think that would allow people to be able to see as well. And Sheila thought that would work well for her customers to have that parallel, because they typically park and unload sewing equipment, things to bring into the Hive.
The only thing is, is I'd really have to look at it to see if we have handicap accessibility to that sidewalk and all of that before we do that, because-
Okay.
We really need to make sure that there's, it's accessible if we're going to do that.
And I'm, and I'm not sure that it is, definitely. I'm really not, so that would-
I don't think it is, that's why.
That would, that would certainly be something to take into consideration. And maybe we need, I would suggest that we get a proposal to make it handicap accessible and get in compliance with that. Because that is, that is, there are a lot of people that use that parking in that business.
Yeah, Dr. Bert, Jared, and Bourbon, and some of the guys who work at Carter-Hoff Theater. They say they mainly come in this way, because when they leave, even though they're in bigger vehicles, it's still hard for them to see over the trucks, to get their which way they go. This year makes them easier for them to come out, come up here at the stoplight and, or stop sign and go out of town. That's why I suggest, you know, I thought one-way. You know, I talked to Tiffany, and she told me she made it practical now that she leaves to go that way, because she drives Camaro and she sits on the ground.
Can I say something?
Sure.
If you stop to think about it, the parking in Hennessy is not very good, because at the end of the day, after this meeting, I left the lights closed, I went by the, the Mexican restaurant that's closed. And you have to creep out there, because there's parallel parking, you got to creep out there to see, hey, what's going on? Who's coming? Same way between the Mercantile and that building, and then so on and so forth. So you have to creep out there, no matter where you're at in Hennessy, to see the traffic that's coming. Make sure you don't get hit. So, I mean, I just have to say parking is-
We've got a problem right here in this intersection.
Yeah.
Because people parked in front of the park store. What I'd really like to see us do, and I know this isn't going to be popular with some of the merchants, but I really feel like it's a public safety issue, is look at eliminating one parking spot here and one on this corner directly.
Probably at each intersection. Probably eliminate both each intersection.
Probably at each intersection, except where the traffic light is.
No, right, yeah.
And, uh, because you're right, Ashley, it's a problem everywhere. And, uh, and I did have Main Street on there last month as well because of that.
And there is no handicap parking.
And we need to, we need to repaint spaces as it looks like anyway, so. If we're going to make a change, I think now would be the time to... What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want Tiffany, you want to table this and have Tiffany check into the handicap accessibility on that sidewalk and?
I just don't, uh, I, I won't mind tabling it. My deal is I don't want to say it one-way for, for extended time and then turn around a month later and then another time.
Let's make one change.
Exactly. That's what I, yeah.
As long as I don't say nothing where these tables come next month. Discuss the possible, possible actions to prove paying the new director of Public Works salary, half from the street department's salary line item, and half from the HUA either water or sewer line item. Tiffany? It don't sound right, but, uh-
I'm really struggling with this.
I just said, put it on there.
I know.
The water or sewer line, is that what I'm having trouble with? Very interchangeable, you know?
Basically, you want to take half from the, uh-
Half from HUA and half from the street department, pretty much, yes.
I think that's how it was done in the past. Am I wrong?
No, it was all under HUA.
It was all under HUA, okay.
Yeah. This, this new person would be kind of, for at least this fiscal year, filling in as the street superintendent. And then, so we have that money already allocated there, and then the rest would come from-
That makes total sense.
Since it wasn't appropriate, we had the budget, we thought it was best to go ahead and do that. So you've basically made the budget amendment before there's higher. So we didn't have something weird come back after the fact.
I'll make a motion to pay the new director of Public Works half from street department and half from HUA.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
New business?
Police chief.
You need to, yeah, you need to, that item that got pulled down.
Oh, yeah. Pre chief, police chief job description?
Uh, it'll be on next month. That's why I didn't want it in the consent agenda. It's not ready to present to you guys yet. I have to put it into our format. It's in the police department's format, so I have to, and with everything that happened last week, I wasn't able to get to that, so, um, let's, yeah.
New business? Councilperson report, Dave?
Nothing, sir.
Randy?
Nothing.
Bert?
No, sir.
Harold? Nothing. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Third, fourth, and fifth. We should have another meeting together.
It's got another meeting on.
You've had enough.
I mean, I would like that one to happen. I like it, even though-
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay. Seven o'clock. Give me a minute, Harold.
You got 45 seconds.
Well, I don't know.
It's the best we can do.
She's still got jet lag.
Yes. That's for sure.
I, it's hard to feel sympathetic for those, you know? I've been on vacation, excuses.
You know what? I can ask for anything.
Sorry, guys, I've been in Europe.
Yeah. I'm so sorry.
You are not. I wouldn't be. I'm just jealous.
Okay. I really am not. Okay, this one.
Good.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Only two here and two yeses.
Town Hennessy Utilities Board, Utility Authority Board Trustees, Director of Meeting. Call to order, roll call.
I thought that's what we just did.
You just did the roll call.
Oh, I thought it was on the adjourn.
Well, I wasn't sure.
I thought it was on the adjourn. I wasn't sure.
No.
Which she said before, after we did that, okay. Minutes of the previous month's meeting, approval of claims as follows. Accepted department reports. Approval of claims as follows. Hennessy Utilities Authority Fund, $101,009.84. Previous month's Hennessy Utilities Authority Fund, $7,671.70. Accepted department reports, the water department, water test results, recall form. Approved change of order number two for the 24 RE grant water line project performed by Gravesworth Construction. Approved page, grant number two for Gravesworth Construction for the RE 24 water line project. Discussing with possible action to approve payment, the new director of Public Works salary half from the street department. And half from the HUA.
Should that be under other schedules?
Since you discussed it at the last meeting.
I think that's why I stuck it up there, but I just copied it.
You, you previously discussed it already, so.
So it can be a consent?
Yeah, so I think it's proper to have it.
I approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Already got it.
Never mind. I wrote it out.
Okay, so who's claiming it? You are.
Yeah.
Who's claiming the second?
Bert is.
Okay.
I'll just point this way. I got caught sleeping over here. Wrote it all out and then take that.
Okay. Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Other kids' business, accept 2022, 23. Did we table the last one? Can we just run, do I have to do that here?
Yeah, do the action the same on all three of those would be my recommendation. But, but you need to go ahead and take the action, because you need to do it in the authority as well.
Yes.
For the first one, you just skip the table.
Okay. Approve engagement letter with Arledge and Associates to conduct the 23-24 fiscal year audit.
Make a motion to approve the engagement letter with Arledge and Associates to conduct the 2023-2024 fiscal year audit.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Discussing with possible action to direct town administrator to prepare, to prepare the RFP
Are you right, Jim?
I'm doing the 4.2.
Yeah. Oh. Okay. I'll make a motion to ask the town administrator to prepare an RFP for the 24-25 audit.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
New business? Citizens comments? Councilperson's report? Dave?
Nothing, sir.
Randy?
I don't have anything. I don't have anything.
Bert?
Nothing.
All right. I got to ask, Jared, I'm going to ask you a question real quick.
Sure.
When I was talking to you on the phone here last week, you talked about, uh, trying to clean up our meetings a little bit, talking from the people from the audience to the board when we're not on, uh, how do you say that we ought to go forward?
Well, I think, I, I think that's really a question more for you all. I, I think our discussion was a little bit more along the lines of, remember, the overarching purpose and the rules behind the Open Meetings Act is that you're open and people are able to see, see their government in action. It's not necessarily a participation thing. So there are some places that completely pull citizens' comment off of the agenda. There are some places that allow that, but you have to give notice 48 hours in advance. There are some places that do, do it even a little different than that. The other thing where you see a lot of differences, and again, I think it's a personal preference of how you all want to run it, is, you know, the, the participation and asking questions during the meeting. There's some places that are very strict about it. Nope, we're here to conduct business and we're going to get it done, so they don't allow that. Other places, understand that sometimes you hear some good questions and good feedback from that, and it's worthwhile to have that. So I, I think you, you've got a lot of latitude how you can go on that.
So sometimes when we want to, uh, we don't want to, you know, like the deal, like last week, you know, we figured this might be a blow-up deal where we couldn't answer no questions, because we take the no comment out of there by the citizen.
Well, and, and that, that's one of the big problems a lot of people don't like with the citizen comment is everybody wants to say something to you and then get something from it, some kind of action to happen. And, you know, even if you all go and tell Tiffany, hey, can you go check on that for us? You've technically violated the Open Meetings Act, because that wasn't on the agenda. So it becomes very difficult and maybe even more frustrating for some citizens that don't understand that, that you just have to sit there and smile, thank you for your comment, and move on to the next thing. So, so that's the, the logical reason a lot of people have pulled it off of the agenda is because it causes a little bit more angst that-
The only reason I asked you guys to hear it was, you know, if we had to build a whatever, you know, they're going to be asking us a bunch of questions, we didn't have to sit up here and just look at the black wall.
Yeah. Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Good for me.
What if we, I would kind of like to see our agenda revamped somewhat. Could we put that on the agenda for next month to discuss? And, and I'll just tell you, so you don't be thinking about it. I would like to see the removal of the report of ad hoc agencies. I don't think that's necessary. I would also like to see council person reports removed, because it, I feel like we, as the board, if we've got something to bring up, then it should be on it. I feel like we're in a gray area. I feel like we're in a gray area of discussing something that's not on an agenda.
As the city attorney, those items, along with the citizens' comment, are always the scariest ones because it's the easiest place for you all to accidentally make a mistake. Because you respond to something you shouldn't or you say something you shouldn't. And, you know, every single one of those is probably going to be completely innocent, but once it's happened, it's happened, so.
The council person report item goes back, I'm assuming fifty years before the base of town administrator and when individual council or town trustees reported on departments.
Right.
And I just, and I, that concerns me that we go into an area that's not on the agenda.
Harold, you might, Tiffany, you might check with the school. Because I think their policy is you have to sign up forty-eight hours before the meeting. And if you're not on that, and you have to list what you want to discuss. And if you're not on that list, you can't make a comment or a citizen's comment.
My biggest deal, us four can't talk nowhere.
No, right.
And it's hard to discuss, you know, and sometimes putting some of this like on, that you're discussing on the agenda.
You get blindsided, I mean, basically.
But I also feel like if we take it off there, we're telling people that we don't care what their voice is and that's not the case at all.
That's that balance, right, yeah.
So Harold, I got a question. So if I want to discuss something with you and Bert and Randy, I need to put it on the agenda for discussion, is that correct?
That being shared.
Not necessarily being a vote up or down. I might want to discuss something and I need to put that on the agenda, is that correct?
That would be the ideal way to stay one hundred percent on the clear. That way everybody is aware that it's going to at least be talked about.
Okay. I will do that. One more point that I had to make is our format for our agenda is in town code. And if you guys didn't change it when you sent the town code in, we'll need to change it when we get the town codes back from the publisher.
I don't remember that being in the new version.
It's there, trust me.
In the new one, okay, I'll look at that again closely.
I dug it up, I've dug it up several times, as a matter of fact.
And to me, there's absolutely no reason for it to be in there. I clearly must have missed that when we went through, but I don't see the need for it to be in there because it narrows you all down on how you can conduct business and that just changes over time. You shouldn't need the ordinance to change that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Harold.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.